Item number two, approval of minutes to June 4th, 2012 and June 11th, 2012. If no objection is raised, the council chair shall approve the same as written. Item number three, approval of warrants. Suggested motion, move to approve and sign warrants number seventy-one through seventy-four for fiscal year 2012 in the amount of six hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. And warrant number one for fiscal year 2013 in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, one dollar and five cents. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded and any discussion? All those favor? Item four, Chairman Tom Edman. Item five, Town Manager updates.
What I was going to briefly update was we appointed Shelley Crosby as the Freedom of Access Information Officer to start dealing with access issues. And the second item is, I've talked with Dan and started doing Facilities Management Officer and basically make him the key point on doing the evaluations of facilities on cost savings. And those are the quick updates.
Item number six, monthly reports. Dave?
I have nothing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Okay. No further. Item seven, open forum. This is the portion of the agenda where the public can speak to any items on the agenda that do not have a public hearing. Please stand at the date, your name, before stating the nature of your business. Starting in back row? Mixroom floor? Front row? Over on this side of the room? Dave?
Nothing.
Mike?
Just one question. A couple weeks ago, I got a call from a gentleman and he was over to the boat landing over here and apparently there was a bunch of young teenagers, young kids, that he was trying to launch a boat and they would not get out of the way. In that case, where he didn't have access to the phone number for the Lincoln Police, he called 911. Was that the right response for him to do, as other personnel may have that same problem?
He could call that number, but the preferred number would be the 2221 number, 794-2221.
Okay.
That goes directly to Regional Dispatch, so that's where non-
Before the shore and of course, I keep that number handy, so we're not going to talk back with him. After about twenty minutes, I guess they dispersed the area and let him get a boat launched.
That issue's come up a couple times and we've been down there checking that dock routine.
Right. Who else had it? Sure. Who else?
I was just going to let the council know that in the packets that were sent home last Thursday, there was two informational spreadsheets that went over the Ballard Hill expenses as well as the library, and those were not in the packets, so they are provided for this evening's discussion.
Who else? Item number eight, special acknowledgements. The Town of Lincoln acknowledges Ryan Kill with his heroic efforts displayed during water rescue at Prince Thomas Park on June 22nd, 2012. This is the second rescue that Ryan has made while performing his work duties. All right? The Town of Lincoln acknowledges Danielle McLeone for her heroic efforts displayed during water rescue at Prince Thomas Park on July 2nd, 2012. Miss McLeone just became certified life guard, and this is her first summer working for the Town of Lincoln. Chief Lawrence. Wow. You give it this plaque. It says, "Special recognition is given to Linkin Lawrence for his service as the insurance town manager from March 23rd, 2012 to June 12th, 2012. On behalf of Lincoln Town Council, may we say thank you for your leadership during these periods." Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item number nine, consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk, consent due routinely to be enacted by one motion. Yet we know several discussions, okay, that must once again be so request. In which if an item will be removed from the consent agenda, it should be in the form of a cease and desist. Suggested motion, move to approve the suggested motions, items number ten to twenty-two, add for the next motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded and any discussion? All those favor? Six zero. Item twenty-three, installation of street light at the Murgery Drive. Suggested motion, move to install a street light at the Murgery Drive due to safety concerns. Second. Motion's been made, seconded and any discussion? All those favor? Six zero. Item twenty-three, discussion, District 2003, goals and objectives, PowerPoint presentation of Town Managers/Mundrury Staff. Wow. Tom? We got a second.
That's always the fun test.
Give us a minute.
Yeah, I think so. My count. I'll go over briefly what the objective is. Since the last four weeks, I've been meeting all the department managers and members of every department. I started the next phase of meeting businesses over the first of July, it was a little difficult to get feedback, a lot of people on vacation. And what I've done is started to compile, to work towards coming up with a work plan and a very subjective process that will start from the ground up. Getting department managers and staff that works for them, and of course involving the council in the process. But right now, the presentation I'm going to do is basically some observations that has come about over talking with people, talking with a limited number of business people and also citizens as they've been coming in. It's been really interesting that a lot of people have just come in and asked if they can speak with me, and it's great because usually there's a hesitancy from the populace of talking with managers like I am up here. A lot of people just feel like home come in, so that's a good thing. What I've done is I've broken this down into observations and the key theme points that I've noticed that almost every entity or every person I've talked to gets upon a couple of themes. And so I'll just start going through this. First, almost everybody I've met says, you know, this is a great place to live and work. And when you come up here, like I have, it is, it's fun, people like it, people have a good quality of money. And those come from two more or less themes that I've talked with people, and it's that, you know, people perceive that the town promotes or supports public safety. And they're talking about, the number one topic seems to be New Police Chief. That's like a hot topic around here, I don't know what the form or history of them, but almost everybody that I've talked to said, New Police Chief, a great thing for the community, it's really, you know, made it to outreach. Second item is on the fire department, people don't talk about the fire department, they talk about the truck. And they like the new use because it shows that there's conservatism, but they do like the idea of having a truck. The concerns that they have is functionality of the truck, you know, but most realize that since you have a milk facility, you need something taller, like eventually a starship. Most people I've talked to believe that there's great departmental support, a few across us. A lot of people were talking about COGS, RAMP, that the town's willing to take grants and accept grants to help fund public safety. And then coming back to Police Chief, the first thing is that they had, I mean, that he was one of the first police chiefs that gone out to businesses, they had plenty of active business, they're like, you're a manager, and I've met the Police Chief before, you stopped by here before, you know, so that's a great thing. Supports quality of life. A lot of people talk about building standards, you know, their concerns about how the new building standards are going to affect people, but they understand that because of the people want to protect the quality of life, that's a good thing, a lot of them. A lot of people talk about Parks and Recreation and they're really impressed by what the town does with their budget arm now. Homecoming, community events, and the AT&amp;V and Snow Club thing, I'm going to have to work with that a little more because people talk about trails and stuff, and I've been hit up by a number of people on ATV issues, and I guess we're going to work on that. And in general, the theme is that they support promotion of Lincoln as a positive outgoing place, and those are like key themes. The other major theme is support community development. Everybody that I've talked to has talked about how the town seems to support it. And the list of issues being first, the statement, moving to start the community through partnership, a lot of people like that. A lot of people talked about the new designation, and signage is going to be key on that of promoting that, that, you know, Lincoln has been certified as a business friendly community. Item as TIFs being a positive development aspect, because you have a proven track record dealing with TIFs and knowing how they work, that's a very positive from a developer's standpoint. You do have promotion staff, you have staff on, that's able to talk with developers or consultants coming in. One thing that I've talked with a developer who is from away had called me up and said, geez, I didn't know you were in Lincoln, and you know that, you know, we were looking at this and your people are really nice people to deal with. And that's a positive when you have somebody, you know, from Portland calling up saying, hey, you know, we looked out there, you guys couldn't offer the service, you know, sewer lines, because it's a whole different deal, we're going to have to deal with on the sewer issue, I guess, capacity. And gave me a name of the person to talk to in regards to that. GIs capabilities, you have limited capabilities, but it shows that you at least want GIs, so when people, like a site selector or a developer comes in, at least they have an introduction to what could be done. I think the only key pieces that are missing is basically having mapping integrated with utilities, and that's really what a site selector wants, for development. But it's a very positive thing that you do have GIs, you have it on the web portal through Sewell, which makes it accessible to a lot of people if you turn that permission on. The downside is, of course, the limited relationship of the GIs and mapping with utilities, and that's something I'm going to have to address in the future. But all along, very positive, very collaborative, people pursue that, and that's people for money, plus people in the town. One observation that I have, using more line as opposed to discussing, is downtown investment, you know, just the appearance of the downtown. It shows that you're promoting a community series and trying to work with that over the years. Waterfront investment, the gazebo, the last, I guess, fifteen years, that's been a ongoing project and et cetera. The Republic Works Facility, again, the truck for the fire department, as of late, the airport investment after it. Limited capital planning, it's like one of the concerns that I guess, looking from my perspective in, is that you have a capital plan, but it's not really defined out and it doesn't work from the bottom up. It's kind of like hit and miss, and it seems that there's a pick and choose from departments. That's going to be an ongoing process for the department managers, which inside of your packet, I had asked all of the department managers to submit a capital goal, well, a goals, an objectives plan with capital ideas in it. And you can see there's a multitude of ranges and depth that people go to and different views are going to be assimilated that into a workable plan. Start from the ground, get firefighters involved with the fire department, I have to put the chief, talk about that, go over to a engineer's meeting, a department meeting. Also, just starting from that, also with Javette, working with the new Gatsby standards, you know, we'll be reevaluating the whole depreciation schedule, and she worked tremendously on that with this upcoming audit. So, and these are going to be assets that we're going to have to start looking at redeploying toward to even those. Highway projects, it's going to be ongoing. One of the biggest concerns that I think management have was that the way that those projects were being done is, you probably read in the weekly news, it's been kind of a priority with whatever the most problematic road is. Dave Lord is working with getting that RMS program online, we're kind of jumping ahead to like work plan development. But just to let you know that, I think people are realizing what needs to be done, and it is getting done, it's just it doesn't always make a cohesive, not a pretty picture on the way that the process is working. But it's a positive that, you know, you do have a capital plan, and it is laid out, it's just more, need more detail. More positives, cost of payment, cost structure, this is one kind of, I believe, raise. Most people that I talked to, they'd been in the office, too loud in the office, most believe that the town council is very conservative and that they try to make the dollars, you know, stretch. And it goes to having a well timed charter, I believe. You have a budget community process, that's a major plus, because that does bring in people from the outside, the wanting involved into a community process. Community being made up of a point of citizens, of course. You have an active town council. The thing that I've taken away from almost everybody I've talked to, being and having difficulty, is that steady middle rate, you know, having a good, long-term, stable platform to work with is a good thing. You have a growing UDF, there was a year where you had a loss, but the majority of the years, the UDF balance has been growing, back up to recruit from that loss. You're pursuing the Gatsby standards, so you can do some real governmental accounting comparisons and analysis. Steady reserve counts, the history of the reserve counts is very interesting. They're segregated totally from cash flow, so you have a really good understanding of segregation, you know, there could be some things that could rework, maximize cash fund investment, that's something we'll talk about for work and studies. And then the big plus, town staff pursues grants, and you don't know from a management standpoint how, that's a very positive thing. Most people get sedentary in the process, or they'll see, oh, it's only a $2,000 grant, so it's only a $5,000 grant, you know, we're only going to go for the big, big fruit. Here, almost all the staff very in tune to go for the low hanging fruit, plus point for the big items. And that's very refreshing because it keeps people motivated, keeps them working, because they're rewarded by, when they do receive a grant, they get the benefit of that. All right, inside of your document, I have put in all of departments, different multitude by years, but I just want to give you kind of a whirling idea of like possible work plan or future items for discussion. Sean had called me up today, Sean had outlined, he wouldn't be able to make it tonight because he had, with his business, the council. And so he was unfortunately going to make it, but he even called me up to the end of the piece, you know, it was nice, he wants you to do something with the fund balance policy, stuff like that, he had a multitude of ideas of it, and I think it all comes from, I think, whatever he does, you know, what do we do with this money, this UDF? There's a number of things I'll tie in on this list. You know, you have, one of the easy cost savings things is Unified Facilities Management Plan and going to be cost savings, I've already started that by talking to Dan. And your next item for council discussion, it's just an update, is that Dan had done a very simple analysis, a key box of two hundred, well, one underutilized facility and one facility that's utilized a lot, but just probably insulated. And these are things that we'll bring back to you, I've talked later on, that is something that you can address down in the cost savings that pay for itself within a few years. Item, Commercial Industrial Park, I've heard that, a number of different kinds for different people, a private handle, a new town office discussion, site selection, going across us, there's a plethora of ways of dealing with that. Evaluation of privatizing, transfer station operations, or even, there's discussion on cost reduction that can be done via technology improvement. We've got, one of the things that is very interesting is the way that your TIF districts are structured out, is that on some of the TIF districts, you could actually move the schedule further out, to a twenty-year period on a twelve-year TIF, to maximize the shelter value, a hundred percent of the benefit value for eight more years. And shelter from the state funding fund, those seem to hurt us on education. And then have that go back into projects, ministry defined projects, instead of, you know, going to the general fund, that would also, that would reduce, which some people would think is an explosion budget, and make it, you know, user defined for project specific. That's one of the things that Ruth is currently working on right now, is, you know, evaluating what can be done with that by enhancing districts. Some other things that have been thought of is Recreation Tourism Discussion, Creative Economy, there's, a lot of people throw that out generically, but it's more of, you know, what is an attractive, what does Lincoln want to attract for a business? You want more creative economy, you want more industrial, more commercial, that's a whole process on itself. Homecoming, discussion of new revenue sources. The setting, the fund balance list here is, I think that Sean outlined, is that right now, the UDF just grows and he wants to know where that definition comes from and how it relates to what he can do with reserves. And then basically, just the rest, I think, so if Sean had already got the airport, promotion of Lincoln and disseminating information, that was one of the things that seemed like people wanted to do, and for some reason just hadn't been done. This weekend, Shelley launched the Facebook site, and I think they have like ninety people already?
It's climbing.
Yeah, it was like eighty or ninety, and that's just on Sunday. And then lastly, I'll just jump to the GIs database. If you do want to have Lincoln for site selectors looking at, that's one of the key things happening in that year, but also defining what capacities are for those utilities are going to be a big thing. Of course, I think everybody realizes here that you're a regional hub, and that's one of the things that, since I'm with the promoter business and everything, is that they're outside of the first concentric range from Bangor, which is, you know, forty-five minutes of travel time, that's usually when people start to define, it's a trip, instead of just running to the store. And so, you know, you have a natural advantage there, that any time that anybody's going to think of traveling somewhere, they think of trips, or they think to running to the store, and convenience is usually a driver for these concentric rings. So, what we have as a path forward is that we're going to be reviewing the sniddles, all of the department heads have received the sniddles, so they've got top of everything. Of course, they're all in New York, so you can see the myriad of ideas that are out there. The next, several department head meetings, because we have our department head meetings are too big, are going to be to define what identifying themes and what are actionable within a reasonable period of time, in the next several years of goals and objectives, and try to prioritize them. We would love to have council input, call me up, send me an email, stop by. We really would love to have that. I think that every, all department heads have a great amount of energy and enthusiasm to do positive things, and, you know, we just need that mission. The goal is to have a draft come back to council in August, and a final goals and objectives list and draft it up for council for September. I'll also just briefly talk about, with this going on at the same time, we're working with the department heads to have work plans done by each department. Of course, each department has a work plan that they go through, budget process for that, and as you know, it's a living document, so what we would like to do is develop even more of a work plan, a meeting with tomorrow's staff meeting is going to be on how do we develop work plans to really show it, the short term goals and objectives are, and what the work plan items are. I think the way it's been done is kind of they have a schedule of doing things, but it doesn't really assign a cost or cost structure to. And one of the items that kind of struck me was that, in the charter, it's like I mentioned Javette, and I said, you know, I said, where's everybody's work plan? You know, because charter says on, in the first year, it says have everybody's work plan. And knowing that things over time, people have institutional knowledge, or people have work plan, and you have, Javette was like, there's no work plan. You know, because I think that that's what has been done, is that everybody knows everything and everybody, but what happened, but sometimes perspective, so you can compare out from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, what the changes were that led you to that path. And you might say you're going to do this, that, and the other thing, but as you deviate off the path, you want to have a little understanding. And that's probably one of the problems that I had when I came here, it's like, that people have a two-year work plan, and that some people might have been pre-vying for work plan items. Long story short, is that people in their mind have goals and objectives. Give you an example, Dave Lord has an RMS program that he wants to implement, but didn't have the time, and has the system, but didn't have the usability of the system, maybe they wanted to do it in the streetlight training. But, long story short, that's the quick summary, that's our work plan, and we'd love to hear comments, thoughts. Let's see, I've been out, you know, sorry, I've talked to many firemen, in the basement, I've been out, I think, seven businesses last week and before, there was work, and first, we were watching, talking, we were there for a couple of minutes. And first, we're watching, and talking, while you were there.
You didn't stop at the Timber House in McDonald's?
No.
You don't have the perspective.
I had lunch at the Timber House, and my girlfriend and I talked to some of the waitresses over there, and it was very positive.
You really need to do reference.
In the coming week, it's River Drivers, going out there, meet and greet the homecoming of horses key, and I felt like, of course, Shelly's got like a laundry list of where we're supposed to be, and it's been very interesting. Because everybody, with the exception of a couple people that are very, very nice, very positive, some people are angry, but you can find out what key issue is, like dogs, or, you know, most, or folks, and it's very interesting how that can turn out, and the person explains why they're upset with the town. Comments, questions?
I have a quick one. Neil, can you explain a little bit more detail, first of all? I'm pretty sure I know what a site selector is, is that what the, what that is, and how the GIS is going to tie into that?
Site selectors work either, you know, there's several in Portland, many out of state. What a site selector does is a company policy, obviously, we're looking for properties that meet this need, and we need these demographics. And the demographics might be, you know, we need X number of traffic passes, car counts, I need water, sewer, you know, clean water, sewage, I need the water rates at X, I need, you know, this much land for the facility, because our block size is X. And most properties, and they want to understand what building codes you have, and what availability is. And usually what a site selector will do is that they can go to like a data warehouse at Sewell or something like that, and say, who's, you know, got data available? And they'll just look at what data is available. They might use like an EMDC in Maine, who's domain development corporation, and do a screening that way. And usually what happens in Maine is that, since the county, in other states, counties do these functions, a lot, you know, mapping, taxing, everything has all integrated, and Maine is kind of a hot lodge of 400-plus communities, so when a site selector deals with Maine, they expect a discerning complication. But they're also looking for certain criteria, and having that data set all neatly in one package makes it easier, so a site selector that only needs a few things can be happy to even a site selector that's looking for a multitude of data points. And so the less data points that you have available to the public to look at, the less opportunity you have.
So this is a good economic development tool, in other words, to update GIS and to have a company like, say, the Sewell company, a site selector contact them, and they can say, okay, this is what you're looking for, and Lincoln will make your names, that sort of thing?
Usually what you want to do is you have an open portal, so you're, like, a Sewell would have to use an open portal. That means anybody can come in and look at the data sets pretty much for free. There's usually a pre-screening tool that they have, you know, they have the recognized site selector, or, you know, even like an App Stein, or the voice, or one of those property companies that sometime might do it. Around here, what happens is a lot of times, if there's a realty company like Bangor, they use App Stein, and they'll talk with them first and say, well, do you know many properties that are listed that have these things? And they want to go straight. But if you really want to get anything of large value, you have more than these data points, probably, because they don't want to have to get hung up, as this one developer did, that wanted to do something in town, and then found out that the sewer district, you know, was going to get run, because they don't have capacity, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's a lost opportunity, you know, it may or may not be able to, but you never know if they needed the equivalent of 3,000 feet of heat a day, but I would say, you know, something bigger, you know, something that's bigger than a restaurant, but potentially could have done like a little, you know, shots at a restaurant, because when you're talking 3,000 feet, that's, you know, 10, 10 housing equipment.
Any other questions?
One important discussion, cost savings and investment in community facilities, availability in the library.
What I have Dan put in the packet, because this is just a preliminary exercise, kind of show you the kind of local improvements that I think can be used to have in the process. Just an example, on Vallet Hill, we caught a breakdown that we're trying to hand off to Shelly, just updated you on. Because I see the heating costs is like the biggest losing factor for the town. And so when you look at this factor, and you look at the operational loss, and it's directly tied to heating, one of the things that I asked Dan to do is I said, what, what has been playing on, on facilities in town? And Dan said, well, you know, look at different opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. The goal that I see is this, a low hanging fruit, that if you just look at doing something for insulation of that, of that, you spend, you're losing the net loss of that facility tremendously. But then when I was talking to them, I said, well, let me go look at all of the town facilities in the library, which was in, we're, and number two, number two on the back side, he did an estimate of heat bars, which is background, thank you, these are the units, that shows that the old section of library, there's basically been no insulation, and that's something that can be readily addressed, and have some readily available cost savings. We put this together just to start the exercise of discussion. In the next few weeks, when we come to the conclusion on where the budget ended up, we're going to have some of the allocations that possibly can be had from the undesigned, I should say, surplus funds that typically go to undesigned funds, that you might want to look at putting into installation of these two facilities. Just because it's a net savings quickly, of all factors, for those facilities, and basically drive some kind of vibes to what to do with first, Vallet Hill, and then number two, on the library, you don't save operational costs in the first year, if you only did one part of the project. But this was only put in here to begin the discussion, and the following weeks, we're going to work together to hit the facility plan, we can basically drive a proposal back to council on what recommendations we need.
Can I decide real quickly what SIR stands for?
Savings to investment ratio.
Okay, thank you.
And I welcome Dan to add anything, but over, look to someone, because he's the cost saving guy.
Yeah.
7.5 executive session, just a motion, we've retired the executive session, so we do 101, 4516, discussing personnel.
Can you give me a preview?
Preview is, basically, Lincoln owners have an opportunity...